Okay. Okay, this meeting is called to order. Would you call the roll, please?
Mayor Studabaker.
Here.
Councilors Wynn.
Here.
Wendlin.
Here.
Koho.
Here.
Manns.
Here.
O'Neil.
Here.
And Lamah.
Here.
Would you stand and join me in the flagpole?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the first item on our agenda is public comment. First, Mr. Charles Armsby.
Good evening, members of the 2019-2020 Lake Oswego City Council. My name is Charles Armsby. I live at 170 Southwest Birds Hill Road.
Is this microphone on?
Hello? Okay.
There you go. Okay. Thank you.
My name is Charles Armsby. I live in Clackamas County within the Lake Oswego Urban Growth Management Area at 170 Southwest Birds Hill Road, Portland, Oregon 97219-8502. Having got the, what you might call it, Google Maps code memorized. It's 84QVC something. Anyway, about three or four items tonight. A lot of stuff to go over, two of which were rather unpleasant. Item one, I notified you of the WV, United States Army Corps of Engineers WV SOM project. This is going to have, you're going to make their life miserable in trying to do flood control on the Willamette River with a 75,000 cubic yard fill below the base flood elevation proffered for the Foothills Plan. I'm extremely concerned with the cost of that, plus other things I've recently learned. Martin Electric, 91 Foothills Road PCB contaminated site likely. You've got problems, and very expensive ones. So I do want the transcript for the things I requested of the 2019, March 2019, ninth meeting, Tuesday, agenda item or whatever, Foothills Plan. Things were said in there I'm quite concerned with as a handicapped transit-dependent writer. Putting a bus station on the east side of State Street is unacceptable. State Street is devolving to a pedestrian kill zone. I've been accosted twice. Once after loading my mother on a TriMet bus, driver honked at the, TriMet bus driver, so on, so forth. This has got to stop. Second, I was almost hit at State and E. You've closed off State and D. Who did the evaluation on that? I've tried to get the speed reduced in that segment. It's posted at 35. It should be dropped to 25. Coordinate with Clackamas County on Toiliger Boulevard and State Street. Look up the song, "30,000 Pounds of Bananas." You'll understand why. You don't play with physics of moving bodies downhill, especially in limited merge lane. Let's see. Let's get into personal one. Item 19, 9.1, Resolution 1933, 23. If you vote for this tonight, I will file a federal complaint. I'm just at that point. I've applied for LTAB in the years 2012, 2013, 2014. I did not get notice in 2015 or 16, 2017, 2018, and 2019. I've been rejected every time I've applied. There seems to be an ongoing standard operational process of disdain for the unemployed, the unsuccessful, and caregivers in particular. I guess I fit in all three categories. One shot, do it all. There's always somebody better in Lake Oswego than somebody doesn't have a job. Somebody's whatever. Anyway, you've been warned. Vote for it. Complaint will be filed, and I'll make time this year. Resolution 1945, what the heck is Weasel? Willamette Shoreline Consortium. I'd like to know who it is, when they meet, and I'd like to see the records for the last 10 years. I've shared information I've gleaned and found with Jeff Goodman, 1999 property report. I'd like that as well. So I share what I find, and I'm declared not capable of sharing. I'm declared blacklisted from committees, both here at Metro. So you've got problems with communication with the unemployed, the unsuccessful, and caregivers. I suggest you address it in your discussions. I'm not going to stick around. Good evening.
Joanne Trask.
Good evening. Can you hear me? My name is Joanne Trask. I'm a Lake Oswego resident. I am also the local program coordinator for Special Olympics Clackamas County. And I wanted to make sure that you're aware that as a result of a partnership with the Lake Oswego Parks and Recreation, we have been able to offer since 2004 tennis training and competition for our youth and adult athletes with intellectual disabilities at the Lake Oswego Tennis Center. This has been a hugely successful program, offered eight weeks in each of our three sports seasons. Parks and Rec Tennis Pro Jerry Allen is the head coach, assisted by up to 20 volunteer assistant coaches. They offer a top-notch tennis training program for our athletes. We have many return athletes, many new athletes, and the benefit for our athletes are so numerous, including the obvious: exercise, coordination, discipline, friendship, et cetera, plus learning a sport that they can play for the rest of their lives with friends and family outside of Special Olympics. I have sat with parents and caregivers at other Special Olympics sport competitions with parents whose athletes also play tennis, and they have expressed so much gratitude for this tennis program. Our athletes are not the only beneficiaries. As is common in Special Olympics, our volunteer coaches benefit from the experience as well, often discovering new talents and abilities that they did not know they had. Comments from volunteer and assistant coaches include, and I quote, "This is the highlight of my week, and this is my favorite thing to do." We have several high school-age assistant coaches as well, one of whom loved working with our athletes so much that he became a peer mentor for someone at his high school. The proposed renovations to the tennis center would be a direct benefit to all of our program participants. Many parents and caregivers stay while their athletes play and are subject to wayward balls sitting on the benches by the sides of the court. A viewing area would be a huge improvement for safety. Many athletes are dropped off at the tennis center or take Metro Lyft and need a safe and dry place to wait before and after practice. And the current waiting area really only accommodates four or five people comfortably, so others need to find a place to wait for time on their court, and the only option is usually somewhere behind the curtain, which is awkward for those who are not sure where they're supposed to be. I wanted to urge the city council to fund the tennis center renovations, knowing that the renovations will benefit many members of our community, including our Special Olympic athletes and other participants. Thank you.
Thank you. Deedee Montgomery.
Mayor and council, thank you very much for letting me give comments. My name is Deedee Montgomery. I live in Westland, Oregon. In full disclosure, I am married to Mayor Russ Axelrod, although he has nothing to do with me being here today. But I do appreciate the time and sacrifices you all give to your positions. I'm here today, really, and I'll try to be brief. I sent you an email just about the lack of safe biking along Highway 43. For the last seven or eight years, I've cycled from my home in Westland seasonally. I basically, I do not do dark, and I don't do bad weather. But three to four days a week between my house in Westland and OHSU. I love 95% of my ride, and I feel safe on it. That's the part along River Road in Westland, Triumph Creek Park, and the bike lane on Twiliger. I dread and hate my part in Lake Oswego, as do other bikers, and I'm fully aware that ODOT owns that. I'm shocked there hasn't been a fatality. As many of you know, without a bike lane, not only is there not bike lane, but with the drains on the right side of the road, if you ride over those, it's really frightening, and I try to avoid it, and then cars don't like you. The way I do it, in all honesty, and I am a rule follower, but I go under an underground parking lot, I go through parking lots, and I do ride on the sidewalk, and I've asked three police officers if that's okay, and they've said yes. I'm respectful to those on the sidewalk, and I understand a concern that could have been expressed by the first person about that. So I just bring it up. It's tough. I understand. The thing is, with all the reinvestment and development that's going on into the city with your hope to bring in younger people, we know safe commuting is good for the public, it's good for your community, it's good for all of our health, it's good for our well-being. But I think if and when there's a fatality, this question will come up regardless of it's ODOT or Lake Oswego, and I hope that never happens, but I've seen some things. I have two friends who have had concussions on this stretch. So I'll leave you with that. I have written before, and I've put letters in the Times, and I'm not a militant cyclist. I follow the rules, but I really believe in it. And I would just add, I know my time's almost up, but my mom recently moved into the Hallinan neighborhood. And when I cut that way from my bike ride, I cannot avoid those stretches, and it's reminding me just how hard it is. It's really hard. So thank you for listening. I don't know what you're going to do with that, but I know that it's important for folks to share feedback to council. I know that Westland's looking at it, and they don't own that stretch of ODOT either. So, or there's a stretch of Highway 43. So thank you, and have a nice meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Save all the rest for us, will you?
He won't be home.
Heather Dudley.
Good evening, council members. My name is Heather Dudley, and I am a 12-year resident of Lake Oswego and outgoing president of Lake Oswego City League Tennis, a league of 120 women who play tennis out of the Lake Oswego Indoor Tennis Center, several of whom are here tonight. As the Parks Advisory Board will be presenting their recommendations on the Parks and Rec Bond at your July 16 meeting, I would like to encourage the council to take the time to learn about the Indoor Tennis Center and why the tennis community has been asking for improvements for years. I started playing there around 10 years ago. The tennis staff does an amazing job making sure that the actual courts are among the best in the metro area, from the surface to the lighting. The actual facility, however, is the worst, and that's in comparison to other public tennis centers, not private clubs. There's no lobby, no viewing area, no locker room space to change into tennis clothes, all of which public courts such as the Portland Tennis Center and Vancouver Tennis Center have. I'll give you a few examples why these small changes impact not only the comfort, but also the safety and security of our players and parents. My older daughter took lessons when she was seven. Took her to her first lesson, my four-year-old in tow, only to be told that I could not stay and watch because my four-year-old was not allowed to sit on the side of the court, which is the only viewing area. I couldn't even walk my daughter out to the court to make sure she met her instructor. My four-year-old and I could sit on the small bench in the entryway next to the two bathroom doors, or go sit in her car. I play USTA matches against teams who come from outside Lake Oswego, which are often scheduled from 8:00 to 11:00 p.m. at night. This spring, an opponent of mine ran out to get something from her car at 9:30 p.m., not realizing that the door locked behind her. No one is in the entryway because the only place to watch our teammates and wait for our match is on the benches by the tennis court.
Did you win the match?
I did. But no one heard or saw my opponent for 10 minutes, and luckily I happened to go to the restroom and saw her waiting in the dark outside. These are just a couple of examples of how the tennis center sorely needs improvements. This is a facility that is the only division in Parks and Rec that pays for itself. Many people might say tennis is not a growing sport. However, the tennis center is used to capacity. Last year, our youth and adult classes increased in participation. My daughter, who was once that seven-year-old, now plays on the Lakewood High School team. Fifty girls turned out for Lakewood Spring Tennis this year. The tennis community has participated in many surveys and meetings for the past 20 or more years, looking for improvements. The current proposal from Parks and Rec is called the 2003 Modified Plan. Last I checked, that was from 16 years ago. Funding's always been an issue, which is why, as a tennis community, we helped rally the community to pass the Parks and Rec Bond. Now we're asking the council to allocate funds to improve the existing Lake Oswego Indoor Tennis Center. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Liz Hartman.
Good evening, Mayor Studabaker and city council. I'm Liz Hartman, Director of the Chamber of Commerce. I'm here to comment on a couple of items. 6.2, just want you to know that the Chamber of Commerce is ready, willing, able, and excited to work with the city council in any way regarding destination marketing. And on item 6.4, would like you to know that the Chamber fully supports whatever the city and the city council can do to help remove barriers for the businesses on Boones Ferry Road, the Lake Grove businesses during the two-plus years of construction. And we will help you get the word out, or whatever you need with that as well. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Chuck Fisher.
Good evening, and my name is Chuck Fisher. Do I need to repeat my address? You guys have that?
No.
Okay. Reason why I'm here this evening is to plant a seed, and to plant a seed for Ed Yuric. I'm sure all of you have heard Ed testify at one time or another. Ed came to our Lake Grove Neighborhood Association meeting, which I have the privilege of being the chair of. He presented, actually, a kind of interesting idea. There's a property located at 21 East 18, double A tax lots, 100, 400, 300, 200, and 100. Those were approved for 25-lot subdivision. Ed said, geez, wouldn't it be neat if we could take a little portion of that and make it into a little tree park? And I said, Ed, they're never going to sell this as a little parcel, but I'll call. So I called the broker, Brian Matthews. We had a nice talk. About three days later, he calls me back, and he says, you know, I talked to my owner, the owner, the seller, that's an interesting idea. And we may even take a little less than our 2.5 million, asking if you guys can figure out some way to do this. And I said, well, hey, you know, I don't know. I don't know if it's a good park or not. But I do know one thing. We're losing a lot of trees along Boones Ferry Road. There's not enough space for, to even plant the kinds of trees that we're losing, the Douglas firs, the larger trees. And so maybe, you know, maybe we need a park, and maybe not even a park. Maybe what we really need in the Lake Grove Neighborhood Association, that Ed has identified, is a tree preserve. Call it a park, but we'll call it a tree preserve, where all those trees that can't get replanted, light trees that we're losing now, we can put in a tree preserve. And $2 million, guys, I mean, that's not that much, okay? Now, I know there are other things going on, apparently regarding this property, so it might be worth it to, if possible, you know, if it's something that sounds like a good idea, and I don't know whether it is a good idea, but if it sounds like one, to maybe ask maybe Parks and Rec or somebody to start giving you a little consideration. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Lee Morris.
Sir, your phone.
Sir, your phone.
We would call you, but...
Good evening.
Good evening, city council. Thank you very much for your time. We are here to ask for your consent...
Can you, Mr. Morris? Mr. Morris?
Yes.
Can you get a little clearer, though?
Yes.
Thank you.
We would like to ask for your consent in annexing the property here that's coming from Clackamas County to Lake Oswego, and that's 5751 Washington Court. And Mr. Inglob, who is purchasing the property, would like to move his family to this area.
Would like what?
Like to move his family to this area, build into homes for his family with this property.
Great.
And it's on the agenda tonight, so we would ask for your consideration of getting it done tonight.
All right.
Because they only have 30 days, is the way the thing is.
Great. That's an item coming up on our agenda right now, isn't that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yes, thank you so much.
Super. Thank you. Ken Sandblast.
Good evening. Ken Sandblast, Lake Grove Business Association President. I'm here because I understand that I should be talking to you during public comment instead of during item 6.4, so if that's not correct, please feel free to stop me. 6.4 is one of the ongoing efforts that we're very appreciative of, the city, both city management and city staff continuing to deal with all of the little issues that come up as the Boones Ferry Road finally reaches its construction stage after the years of many and the support of you and your predecessors, so we appreciate all that. We're here mainly because this, I got contacted by one or two people in the business association that are affected by the construction that's going on, primarily about the A-frame sign size. The process that's in the ordinance seems to be quite fine. Of course, there's going to be review by city staff. They're going to look at it as is listed in your ordinance for site distance considerations and locations and those kinds of things. I don't think there's any issues with that. The main issue seems to be that apparently the Arts Festival itself and others use frames that are apparently A-frame sizes that are a touch bigger than what this ordinance says. So instead of, for example, the five square foot on one side, these things are about 42 inches high that people have already bought, and these are some of the same businesses that are still going to come to the city for replacement and review and replacement of their monument signs. So they're trying to deal with this the best they can. I think, again, they're not, there's really been no issues with coming to the city to let them review the signs, but apparently some people have already made investments in signs that are, for example, 42-inch total height and a six-foot square foot instead of a five-foot square foot. So I'm just here tonight to give you that testimony and ask that you would consider, again, I don't know that there's really any significant change, especially since they're already coming to the city for review. One thing I would note is the concern about, you know, potentially enforcing this after construction, and I'll just end by saying the business association will continue to work with the city on anything that we can do to help make sure that if people are not taking their signs down after this construction for the next two years, we will stand ready to help get those signs down. So that's all I have tonight, and if you have any questions, I'll see if I can answer them.
I think we're pretty clear on what you're asking.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mike Buck.
Good evening, Mayor Studabaker, councilors. Mike Buck, 3155 Edgemont Road. I just come tonight through you to share, hopefully, a word of comfort and hope for all the people that are lamenting the loss of trees on Boones Ferry Road right-of-way. And the sole advantage point I have over anybody else is the vantage of being on the Citizen Project Advisory Committee that developed this plan. So unfortunately, we don't have really good visualizations of the street corridor project to look at what it will be as a totality in 10 years, and so I'm kind of sorry for that. So I think for those that look at Boones Ferry Road now in the kind of denuded look, I want to reassure people that our intent is to have a green corridor, and the pride of the project is in that softscape infrastructure that will be the spine of Boones Ferry Road. I think it's helpful to have some perspective, because I hear a lot of people saying the cost or the price we're paying in these loss of trees is too heavy. And so I'd like to say to those that think that, that, you know, this is a street construction, but the Village Center Plan, the Lake Grove Village Center Plan, is more than just about the street. We passed a lot of guidelines that helped harmonize neighbor and business. So upon future development, there's long buffers, like 11 feet, between neighborhood parcels and business properties. Those are where the iconic trees can go, and this plan is mandating trees and shrubbery as opposed to residential. So that's a real sign of hope beyond just the street, what's going on. In terms of our history, you know, if one looked at old studies and pictures, in 1900, Lake Oswego, and it wasn't Lake, just Oswego, had very few trees, and is only, and that was due to logging, you know, mining, agriculture, and fires. And it's only when the industrial production dropped and turned residential that we've allowed the trees to develop. In 1947, you can virtually see all the trails on Iron Mountain Park because there are no trees there. There were no trees on Mountain Park. So it takes time. So I think we're going to need to take time, and we need to come with that kind of perspective as we look at Boones Ferry Road. But I just want to assure everyone, and I am going to miss the three trees they're taking down on our property there, but I'm looking forward because I think Boones Ferry Road will be healthier, will be multimodal, it'll solve the problems we heard two other people talk about in terms of, you know, bike safety, and it's going to be more people-friendly than what it certainly is now. So let's suffer through, sacrifice to achieve the goals. I think we still need to work together to find out where can we put the appropriate trees in the appropriate places to get that character, especially the Grove character that we appreciate as a city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mike, you've got a question for us. You and I've talked about getting information in the stores and restaurants that possibly could be passed out to customers coming in or to the dining patrons. We have that little brochure that staff put together, which is pretty informative, but it doesn't have a lot of the future images. Do you think we can get some more? Do we have any more images that we could put into a handout that servers could give people if they're wondering?
I wish we did, and I think we need to work on it. I mean, if you looked at the Springs residence, and they have this beautiful drawing of what the Springs will look like, like in five years, it looks beautiful. I wish we had something of that kind of scale for Boones Ferry Road, but...
Well, let's look at it. Our Director of Engineering's here, and our Director of our Chambers here, and our Director of Lake Grove Business Associations here. Maybe we can put our heads together and come up with something.
Yeah, it's easy. It's easier to reminisce than to envision, and I think it's hard right now for people to imagine what it will look like. And I'm just, I thank you for that, because I think the more help we could get in that vein, it would really help.
Great. Thank you.
Linda Christensen.
My name is Linda Christensen. Good evening, and thank you for taking our public input. I'm a tennis fanatic. I've been playing in Lake Oswego for 32 years, since we moved here. Play City League with about 120 other women. I play USTA with about 300 men and women. My children have taken lessons. I've taken lessons. I'm part of the Special Olympics program. I'm a volunteer. Tennis is about playing and watching, and we can't watch. As a tennis player, we want to watch our team. As a parent, we want to watch our children. We've been trying for 32 years to get some improvements to the tennis center, and now that we have some money, I'm begging for you to give us that little improvement in the tennis center.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. We'll go down to business. First item is public hearing, Mr. Powell. Ordinance 2816.
Yes, this is not a public hearing. This has moved to continue the public hearing to July 16, 2019, as recommended.
I'm sorry. I forgot one other thing. Is there any follow-up from previous public comment?
No, Mayor.
Go ahead, Mr. Powell. Go ahead, Mr. Powell.
Yeah, again, this, staff is recommending that the council move to continue this matter to July 16, 2019. We're still in the process of figuring out what from the Metro Model Ordinance and the Clackamas County ordinances should be adapted into the Lake Oswego's code to make sure it fits well. And we should have that ready for you for the next meeting.
So you have to have a motion that's approved?
We need to continue the public hearing to July 16.
Second.
Any discussion, all in favor?
Hi.
Anybody pose? Okay, thank you, Mr. Powell. Next is Resolution 19-29, authorizing wider wholesale rate changes. Mr. Kamerek. Kam out of retirement to help us here.
Wow. Yeah, one day. One day off. Good evening, Mayor Studebaker and members of the council. My name is Joel Kamerek with the City's Engineering Department. With me tonight is Sergey Tarasov. Sergey is a project manager with Financial Consulting Services Group, or FCS Group. They've been providing financial analysis primarily concerning water and sewer rates to the city since about 2008, if I, if I'm remembering that correctly. The matter that we're bringing to you tonight is Resolution 19-29. And if approved by council, this would authorize an adjustment to current wholesale water rates. These are the rates that we charge several of our wholesale customers that operate within or immediately adjacent to our urban services boundary. We were scheduled for a study session back on July or June 18, but due to the size of the agenda that evening, we were postponed. So with your indulgence, we'd like to go through the PowerPoint presentation that we prepared. So if that's okay with you, we'll move through it pretty quickly. I'm going to do the first few slides, and then I'm going to turn it over to Sergey to finish this off, so. So we'll talk a little bit about the background. Sergey is going to spend the bulk of his discussion or presentation on methodology, and we'll conclude with proposed rates. And then it's your opportunity to ask any questions you might have of us. So we're, this is really just a good business practice. So the history here is that back in 1998, we had an adjustment of wholesale water rates. Then again, we did that in 2012 as a result of having built several large pieces of water supply infrastructure that are used by our wholesale customers. And then, as you well know, in 2016, we completed the Lake Oswego Tiger Watership, Water Partnership projects that added about $150 or $60 million of capital infrastructure to our water supply system. And a good portion of that system is used by these same wholesale customers. So it was appropriate to revisit those rates and make sure that we were recovering the cost of supplying water to these wholesale customers commensurate with our cost to produce the water and get it to the doorstep. This, the proposed new rates reflect that significant capital investment, but they also reflect the increased O&M cost to operate those facilities and also the significant depreciation cost that now is accruing on those assets. These are the wholesale customers that we provide water to. So Arrowood, which is city of Portland, they're up just on, just outside the northern border of our urban services boundary. Alto Park, also city of Portland. And then within our urban services boundary, we have the River Grove Water District, Skylands Water Company, the Glen Mori Water Cooperative, and the Lake Grove Water District. So we have intergovernmental agreements with all of these entities, with the exception of city of Portland. That's kind of an historical artifact. I don't find any agreement that we have about supplying water to them, but we, we have for, for quite a number of years. Here's where those districts and cooperatives exist, again, within and adjacent to our urban services boundary. And then by way of example, choosing the Lake Grove Water District, this dark blue line on this map indicates basically the infrastructure that is in place that is used to supply that water district with water. So it includes our new river intake pump station. It includes our raw water pipeline and finished water pipelines, our new water treatment plant, several water reservoirs and pump stations. And all that water passes through those facilities before it can be supplied to the district. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Sergey to take us through the methodology and to the conclusion of the presentation.
Thank you, Joel, and thank you, Mayor and council members, for taking the time to meet with me today to go over the results and the methodology of the study. I'll walk you through the methodology. Please let me know if I'm going too fast or if I'm going too high level or getting into, into the weeds a little bit too much. So for our update of these charges, we did use the consistent methodology that was developed in the previous updates in 98 and 2012. And we are using industry standard approaches for developing fees and charges identified in the American Water Works Association, or AWBA M1 manual. And typically, in the rate-setting industry, there are two key primary ways to set rates. The first one is usually called a cash basis, and it's usually applicable for owners of the system, customers, retail customers that you provide service to, the customers that actually paid in a system development charge or capacity charge to buy into the system. So they have an inherent risk because they're owners. They need to make sure everything's in compliance. They have to follow regulatory requirements. And under that approach, we try to assess things on a future prospective basis, where we're trying to plan for the future, what kind of infrastructure we need to bring growth online, what kind of costs we need to incur to make sure we're running our system into the future on a successful, financially sustainable basis. And there, we're trying to recover costs for O&M, debt service, and some form of cash funded capital. The second primary way to assess rates is something that's referred to in the industry as utility basis, and usually it's applicable to renters of capacity, somebody such as wholesale customers and somebody such as a contract-type customer. So in that sense, we have to be retrospective, only assessing them for costs that are used and useful, meaning they've already been constructed, they're already on the books, and they're in the ground. And that's why that approach is typically utilized for wholesale rate-setting basis. Now, under that approach, to identify the annual revenue requirement, we take a look at capital differently. So the O&M component is very similar to the cash basis approach, but on the capital side, we're recovering that depreciation component. So again, as the assets are being used by these customers, they need to pay for that year's worth of, of usage and obsolescence of that infrastructure. Also, a second key capital component is return on investment. I really like to think of this one as, as a rental capacity charge because these customers did not pay for capacity through an SDC. They have to pay for that capacity through an annual rental fee. And it carries an inherent risk component because, again, they're renters. They don't, they don't have to comply with regulatory requirements. The owners do, so they have to reimburse the owners for that a bit of a premium on that, on that investment. So those two key capital components that differentiate the two methods of rate setting. Now, for the study itself, we went through a five-step process to, to update the rates. First, we grouped all the O&M components and the cost components, depreciation components into functions of service, such as supply treatment, distribution costs for pumping, storage, and pipes, as well as transmission. Then we isolated only the Lake Oswego share of costs and assets. Again, because now we're, we're working with the city of Tigerd in the partnership, we want to make sure we're only passing through Lake Oswego's costs to our wholesale customers. And there, to be consistent with the partnership study, we simply utilized the same methodology that was developed as part of that study to do that process. Next, we identified the infrastructure that these wholesale customers are utilizing. So if you think back those two slides, and I'll click to this one here, you'll notice that the customers who are providing service are located throughout various portions of the city and the service territory. So somebody like the Portland connections up above, the Arrowood and Alto Park customers, will utilize different infrastructure versus somebody who's connected in the bottom right, somebody like Glen Mori and Skylands. Looking at this graphic, you can see that you'll need to use a lot less pipe, let's say, to get water to one customer compared to the other. So we needed to go through and identify what type of infrastructure each customer actually utilizes, so we only assess them for the costs that they incur, that they incur on the city. After that, we developed usage profiles with latest production information and developed unit costs that we are presenting to you today. So I'll, I'll go through some of the key components, how we, how we went about developing them, and then feel free to ask questions as we go along. So starting with the O&M component, we started with a 2019 budget fiscal year just due to the timing of the completion of the study. We took out any capital-related components and contingencies, and then adjusted for customer costs since we'll be developing a cost-based, meter-based charge, which we'll touch upon towards the end of the presentation. So once we did that, our $24 million budget was reduced to about $5.1 million that was allocable for O&M only. And you can see to the right how it breaks down by function of service. For the, for the depreciation and the asset portion, basically the capital pieces of the update, we looked at the total infrastructure that was in, in the place today once the LO Tiger partnership has been completed. We took out anything that was donated or contributed to the city. The, the owners of systems did not have to pay themselves, and then we took out the Tigerd share. So that original cost that was put into the ground resulted in approximately $154 million in infrastructure in the ground today. Annual depreciation was about $2.3 million, and cumulative depreciation was about $18.7 million. So looking at that cumulative depreciation number, we see that our infrastructure is really new. Again, as we know, the, the big project just finished a couple of years ago, but majority of assets have not been able to depreciate. So it's, again, brand-new infrastructure that we're recovering costs on. To calculate the return on investment, we multiply the netbook value, which is simply original cost less cumulative depreciation by rate or debt on the remaining debt principal that the water utility is carrying. That's, we currently have two full faith and credit loans, and the average cost of debt there is about 4.5%. We also look at the equity portion of that, of that figure, and that's basically non-debt-funded, infrastructure cash-funded or weighted average cost of capital of about 4.6%. So then to calculate the return on investment, we simply apply the netbook value. Team studied revenue requirement based on the utility basis, about $13.7 million, with the majority of the increases compared to the 12, a study of $8.2 million coming from the capital side. So if you actually look at the O&M component, the cost did increase, but that's over a seven-year period. So what we're noticing here is that there was a great benefit of economies of scale of cost sharing with the city of Tigerd. So there is a benefit of, even though those costs increased, our allocable share did not increase as much because now we're a bigger entity and we're spreading those costs over two, two cities instead of one city. Now, on the annual depreciation side, again, that's directly correlated with the infrastructure investment we made into the plant. And then on the return on investment, because infrastructure is so new, we haven't accumulated much depreciation, so our netbook value is, is fairly high. That's where the biggest cost component has gone up. And you can equate it to debt service. Our debt service is actually for, in 2019, is about $6.4 million as well. So our return on investment, or close to $6 million, just going by memory. So our return on investment is that rental capacity fee, or you can think of it as kind of a mechanism for paying for debt service. So now that we have identified overall costs that we need to collect in a, in our test year period, we need to go through and make sure we're only allocating the, the costs that are, that our wholesale customers are using. So that's where the functional process comes in handy. So we go through the functions, and we see how do these customers utilize this system? Everybody uses supply and treatment infrastructure just to get the water treated to the portable quality. Everybody needs a transmission line, as you saw visually in the graphic, to get the water from the treatment plant to the distribution system and to the front door, so to speak. Now, this is where things can change on the distribution side. So in terms of the pumping side, depending on the location where everybody's located, they're using different capacities, nominal capacities of pumps, and the quantity of pump stations in general. So we took, we took a look at everybody's requirements compared to total capacity available and adjusted anything related to distributing somebody's, like River Grove. We went through the same process on the pipe side. Again, compared what these customers need in terms of the piping, the size of pipe, we actually weighted by the replacement cost of pipe to account that some of them use bigger pipes than others. And then similarly, we did that for storage. So again, here, we're trying to only assign these customers costs that they're utilizing. Next, we looked at usage statistics during the time it has been consistent, if you just look at production data. So then taking your cost information from prior slides, dividing it by 2.5 million CCF, results in our weighted average price of water of about $5, that related component is $2.50. Again, very simplified breakdown. So applying those adjustments to the $5.54, if we strictly focus on the annual dollars per CCF, you can see while the average cost for water is $5.54, somebody in Arrowood, for those customers, it would be $4.62. Just again, because they're not utilizing the full system like we have available, available within the city limits for the water utility. And then you go down the list, you can see they fluctuate by customer, again, strictly dependent on how each customer utilizes the system. Now, because the peaking factors resulting in this charge are not as significant, the differential between base and peak, we're, one of the options, or the recommended option we're proposing to is to simplify the structure and just charge it based on an annual dollars per CCF instead of charging a lower fee in the off-month and a higher fee in a, in a higher month. Again, that's our initial proposal for you. So putting everything together, we have our proposed rates. The upper table shows you the existing charges that you currently assess to your customers. This is, again, before that large, significant capital infrastructure for the treatment plant. We have a base fee, that's around $1.30 for, depending on the customer, and a peak fee close to $3. You'll see that by customer, some customers have two meters, some customers have one, and, and they vary by meter size. Now, we did go through and, and update the fixed fees for, for these customers, and we tried to tie into the actual cost of the, the replacement of the meter. We looked at the cost by meter size for these greater-sized meters. We adjusted it with inflation over, and amortized it over 20-year period, trying, trying to get kind of a monthly fee over the, of the replacement useful life of a typical meter. We did include a customer component for utility billing into it, but it does appear that the fixed charges have gone down slightly. Again, we're trying to correlate them directly to the cost of the meter. Again, from a big-picture perspective, the fixed charges are the smaller portion, a very small portion of the total fee basis if these, when these customers are utilizing water. So the, the volume component is the majority cost component recovery for most of these customers. So you can see here, the proposal is to go to the uniform structure where the fee is the same per unit throughout the year, and they would be going up to about $4.52 to $0.34 per CCF, depending on the entity. So with that, we get to the end of the presentation. So in terms of next steps, we'd like to hear any feedback from you, and we really recommend adopting Resolution 1922, adjusting the fees based on specific agreements and timings identified within each entity's agreement.
Councilor Mads?
Yeah, I just had, thank you very much. Excellent presentation, much appreciated. One question I had was, will this methodology or the functional process be sustainable over time? In other words, in 20 years, 15 years, someone looking at this methodology, even five years, would it be easily updated based on any changing criteria?
Yes, so the methodology is consistent with standards. It's fairly straightforward to update. It'll, it'll change over time as you build your plant out. So the weightings will change a little bit.
Right.
If you invest more in distribution versus pumping, but it should be consistent and easy to update.
And then my second, very quick question is, will the depreciation take into account the short term? For example, filters, I think, are one of the shorter issues with the 10-year life versus our heavier equipment, which might have a 25- to 50-year life. Will that be included in the rates as well?
Yeah, I believe everything, and we would have to double-check the categorization of the assets, but if they're over $5,000 and they have five-year useful life, they should be included in the asset base.
Okay, great.
And it should be included.
Perfect, thank you. That's it.
Councilor Lamott?
Two questions. One, can you go back to the map of all the different entities that are working with us? And the question I had, because I was a little unclear in the memo we got, was that, keep going, there we go. So each one of these either districts or, or points of access are coming to us for wholesale when they peak in the summer to get extra water. But the bigger districts are using it for their day-to-day water, when we say wholesale rates.
Well, currently, Councilor Lamott, with the exception of the two Portland entities, the others are somewhat seasonal. It kind of varies. Lake Grove, for example, again, used to be a more consistent purchaser of wholesale water on a year-round basis. And then, but they also get the other portion of their water... But they also get the other portion of their water supply from the City of Portland. So, they've been working with the City of Portland to renegotiate the terms of their supply contracts with them, and they've ramped up their purchases from Portland and reduced commensurately hours.
So, that day-to-day water use is coming from Portland, we're the backup for the peak, and that's the wholesale rate. Is that correct?
Well, it, for example, when I first came to work here 25 years ago, Lake Grove was buying almost all of their summer water from us because Portland was charging on them more for that summer water, and then they would buy their winter water from Portland. So, that, over time, that's kind of adjusted. I wouldn't say it's turned on its head.
But in most cases, we're looking at just when the peak is needed, we're there with the wholesale rate.
Correct.
And then the other question I had was in one of your charts for when you were calculating the return, and I saw something in the first chart, there it is, right there, go back one. Under 2019 budget, it's got water project management at 18 million a year, I think. Can you just explain that? I'm trying to figure out what projects would be in that line item.
Well, that's, I believe, for the entire utility, but what you're seeing there under the column headed allocable share is out of that entire budget, what is allocable to the wholesale customers.
But that's our staff, Public Works and Engineering in there doing $18 million worth of projects.
That includes debt service.
Oh, and debt service, okay.
And a contingency.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, that cleared it up.
Counselor Wendland?
So, this is a fairly decent increase. I mean, if you look at, kind of, you're going from the high twos in the peak up to a four and a half roughly price range. So, we're basically going to be a 40 or 50 percent increase in these water rates for the people who are buying it, right?
That's correct.
So, will we have competition now with Portland? Will they stop using our water because we're out of the marketplace now? I mean, are we going to be really high?
Well, it's hard to say what, how they will react to this. I know that Portland water is not getting any cheaper, and now they're building a $500 million water treatment plant and a new pipeline into the river, so their rates are only going to go up over time as well.
Okay, so, we're not completely out of whack from a market standpoint?
I don't believe so, no.
Okay. And then the other part is, we did build the water system, I think, when was it, 2012? And why do we wait till 2019 to, we've been absorbing that cost for six or seven years now?
Well, we just completed the project in 2016, and we didn't have, you know, the full cost information until sometime after that. I mean, it took us about a year and a half to close the books on that project.
So, we're not leaving any money on the table then, right?
I don't believe so.
Okay. And then I guess the last question is, do you, how often would you reevaluate this going forward with rate fluctuations? Would we do this every five years, or is this kind of now set for a while, you think?
Well, I might defer to Sergey here, but, you know, we've done this when we've had big changes to our asset base, which these rates are calculated on. So, I don't foresee us doing another LO Tiger project anytime soon. And I, there are a few things, you know, a few reservoirs that are proposed for future years as a result of our recent Water Master Plan, and to the extent that those new assets would be used to serve these customers, that might be a time to relook at these, but I don't anticipate a need to do this for at least a half a dozen years.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Wend?
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for your very thorough presentation, some flashbacks of return on investment, all these financial terms that have nightmares on those. Remind me of those terms. I had a question on slide 13. If you could flip back to slide 13. So, I'm looking at the, how you're allocating the, you know, the different percentages here, so I'm trying to understand where you're getting, you know, for instance, for example, Arrowwood, their 83 percent of their cost is from distribution pumping and the distribution line, so, but shouldn't, I mean, I'm trying to understand more about that. Is that, how do those numbers add up? Does that mean if we add up, say, distribution pumping for, if it's a pro-rata portion of their usage, so for, how should I say this, for distribution pumping, you know, there's a total cost to do that, and there's seven, six or seven different entities there, so shouldn't each of those seven, six, seven different entities pay their pro-rata portion of that, or how is that calculated?
So, you're not seeing the retail system? So, we're just focusing on the wholesale system? So, basically, this is showing you what these customers' utilization of the system is, and the retail system makes up a difference. We're just not showing you retail customers as a customer of their own, as a standalone customer. We're just focusing on the wholesale customer.
No. So, with these utilities, here these are wholesale, but don't they also supply water to residential too? Don't they resell that water to, like River Grove Water District? Don't they also sell to residential also too?
Yes, exactly.
So, this will create an increase in the residential customers' water rates?
We don't know that. We don't know that. Right, it's a cost. We don't, again, we don't really know how big of a portion of the expense it is over their budgets. So, depending on the, I'm assuming it's not, as Joel mentioned, it's not a significant portion of their water purchases or supply costs. So, it's not going to be a direct translation, you know, if we saw those percentage increases, it's not going to be a direct dollar-for-dollar increase because it's only a share of their expenses. But there is a potential, any cost increase and any cost component can have a pastor effect.
And then, so the question in terms of, so eliminating the peak and the low peak, can you talk to me about that? Because I'm thinking about, in my mind, when I think about peak and low peak, it seems like that would be helpful to maybe encourage you to conserve. Have you thought about if we kept a flat rate, you know, we think about some, for example, at my, at my house, I let the lawn go brown in the summertime because it's just, water's expensive and, you know, for me, it's, I'd rather conserve the water rather than waste on the lawn, for example. But that's a choice that every homeowner makes depending on what they feel is important. But do you, I'm just thinking out loud, I mean, does it, it almost seems like it disincentivizes water conservation if we have a flat fee without a peak versus no peak, much in the same way that electrical rates, if you decide to dry your clothes at nighttime versus during the daytime. It's just, I want to see if there's any impact on behavior if we conserve more or less when there's peak versus low peak.
Well, I'll respond to that, and maybe Sergey can add to it, but he pointed out that the peaking factor between wintertime consumption and summertime consumption for these particular customers is very low. And yet, when we bill these customers, every, you know, six months or seven months, utility billing has to go, okay, now we're on the, now we're on the winter rate, we got to charge them this different rate, now we're on the summer rate, we got to charge them this rate. And the quantities of water that we're talking about here that they purchase is very low. I haven't seen in the prior methodology where we established a wintertime and a summertime rate that had any marginal or material effect on their consumption. It's pretty uniform.
And the third thing was related to that too. So, I've heard from some of the constituents that have larger properties that, for example, have vineyards on their property. So, they can't, and that's their, that's how they generate the revenue, so they can't just let their vines go brown in the summertime. So, they're, they have to water those. And so, do you have any idea how this might impact those properties or those constituents that would have, that rely on water at the lower rate, but then now it's suddenly not much higher?
Well, I have no way of knowing who among the customers of these wholesale entities have, might have vineyards or large properties. But if they're not here, they're on our system, and they're paying for that third tier of water as well. So, if you choose to have a vineyard, my advice would be find the most efficient way to irrigate that vineyard that you can, and it might be drip versus spray heads or something.
Yeah, another way to think about it is that these are wholesale customers, and as one of the council members has pointed out, you know, it's, if you think back, my definition of the approach is, if you're an owner's system, we're trying to look out in the future, and we try to build infrastructure that we can then rent out to the renters. So, now that we've finished building the infrastructure, the owners pretty much pre-funded that we've been raising our rates, especially if you think back, early, late 2000s, early 2010s, we have, went through a series of retail rate increases that have been since levelized. But there was a stretch that we had to pre-fund our rates to be able to support a level of debt service. Now, these customers, the assets are used and useful, if we don't set them to the appropriate equitable rate, our retail customers are going to start subsidizing them, and this is where the inequity will come in, where retail customers have built the system.
Pickup on the wholesale. Skylands, Wells.
Wells.
And backup. Glenn Mori?
Well.
And then Lake Grove is coming in from Portland.
Portland, yeah.
And, you know, we're going to hear an annexation case coming up, and, you know, that's one of the things that people ask us, both unincorporated and incorporated, about, you know, equity and fairness. But we have one of the best water plants in the country now, and we have to cover it. My last question was something that former manager, Laszlo, brought up, and that was we were going to look at the tier rate system for some of the conservation things that Counselor Wend was talking about. Is that in the works for you guys to evaluate that somewhere?
Well, my understanding, and I just spoke with Sean Cross and Brad Stevens today, is that FCS is also performing a study for them on that basis as well. I don't know the timing of the conclusion of that.
Different study, and that's looking at conservation and tiering again.
Right. Looking at different options for setting rates, going away from a tiered to a uniform or a variable, or putting everything on the variable side and eliminating the fixed side. Those are options that they're looking at.
I would like to make a motion, move to adopt Resolution 1929.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Just that we have to say goodbye to Joel, and this is your last presentation to the City Council, and thank you.
Oh, don't be so sure about that.
You may come back.
Thanks for being so, we pull him back in.
Are you all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Next item is item 6.2, Lodging Tax Funds for Marketing and Web Design.
Yes, Mayor and Council, staff is here before you this evening to seek direction on the use of transient lodging tax for, tax funds for marketing and web design. The city's past practice has been to prioritize the use of lodging tax funds for improvements in assets such as public art that benefits both visitors and Lake Oswego residents. The Tourism Advisory Committee is recommending the use of lodging tax funds to contract with a destination marketing organization, otherwise known as a DMO, for the creation and ongoing maintenance of a website that would provide information for visitors on facilities and events in the city. Since this recommendation will both require staff time and use of tax dollars, the Tourism Advisory Committee and staff are seeking council direction this evening. As you read in the attachment to the staff report, the advantage of creating a visitor website by a professional DMO is to maintain and grow Lake Oswego's economic vitality as a tourism. Dollars support the lodging, retail, restaurants, services, and overall city. The continued growth in turn generates stable or increased tax dollars to the city. And this strategy of using a DMO was developed with the goal of attracting and driving tourism from sources outside of the city of Lake Oswego while still benefiting all the Lake Oswego residents as the city works to build a more inclusive community. The disadvantage of a DMO is that it will require a point of oversight within the city, either through staff or contractor, to maintain the long-term success and relevancy of the site. This will require an estimated 30 hours for an RFP process and an estimated additional weekly eight hours for website design, especially in that first year. Once the site is launched, it will require an annual fee to maintain the relevancy of the site and to ensure search engine optimization. The tourism fund budget includes $50,000 placeholder for a DMO and website. The Tourism Advisory Committee has estimated it could cost as much as $150,000 to develop a really good website from the ground up. But if the effort could be at least partially supported through advertising, it could be possible to keep that cost closer to the budgeted amount. Staff recommends continuing the past practice of concentrating the tourism fund dollars on facilities and attractions that benefit both visitors and Lake Oswego residents. But the City Council has asked the Tourism Advisory Committee to, among other things, build and promote partnerships between community organizations to effectively implement tourism marketing and attraction-building strategies. We believe a contract with a local organization for a modest amount to develop a web-based clearinghouse of visitor information may be a good step towards this goal. We specifically recommend that staff seek proposal from the review to develop and maintain a web-based clearinghouse of visitor information. We would seek input and feedback from the Tourism Advisory Committee as to the scope of work and the brand that we would use. If we can keep the cost within the estimated amount, the contract could be awarded administratively if the council approves the overall direction. With me here is Carrie Linder. She's the staff liaison to the Tourism Advisory Committee. And with that, we're here to answer any questions and appreciate any guidance that council can provide on this topic.
Let me make a motion first, and then we can have discussion. I make a motion, we approve staff's recommendation.
Second.
All right, Counselor Wendland, you had something?
Yes, I would like to talk about this a little bit. As the liaison to the chamber, they're going through the same process right now of figuring out a website for the chamber, which is a separate issue. But I think there probably needs to be a larger conversation with them and maybe some other partners to ensure that we have content and, I would say, a good coordinated effort between everyone so that we can have a Lake Oswego website instead of four or five websites that are competing between different entities. So, I guess I would ask maybe that we bring the chamber in and any other partners that you might see that would have a good input to this to do both the tourism part and also to bring people to Lake Oswego for our business community and, you know, Parks and Rec and everyone else. So, I would just say that pause on spending the money until you've coordinated and talked with everybody to ensure that we're spending our money wisely and constructively.
Good. Counselor Manz?
I concur with Counselor Wendland. I think, you know, we are, we do have a DMO in Mount Hood Territories, which is Clackamas County. We, however, on the west side, people don't associate us with Mount Hood, so I think that definitely that's a partner that should be brought to the table. I too agree that the chamber should be involved from the economic development standpoint as well as a touristic standpoint. The two are very wedded, if you will. The city naturally playing a part. I completely appreciate what the Tourism Advisory Committee is trying to move forward. We do not have a coordinated place for people to go to find out what's going on in Lake Oswego. That does need to be done. I'm just not sure at this moment if this is the most efficient way, the most cost-effective way, and the most collaborative way to move forward.
Counselor Kohoff?
So, I'm in accord with Counselor Wendland and Counselor Manz for several reasons. To me, this is clearly a chamber-type project. I'm a little concerned already that somebody like the review has jumped out and made a proposal. I'm not sure that that's where we should be out of the gate. I noticed that the comment was made that the county's efforts hadn't really done much to market us. And one side of me says that the response to that is that we go to the county and see if we can't get better relations with them and find out why it is that we seem to be the stepchild or something, if in fact we are. I was taken back with the amount of money that's being spent by Clackamas County to try to promote, you know, economic development. And, you know, fair being fair, we're not Malala. We're not some of these cities that are just really needing to get economic development as I think they are. So, it's not like we're desperate. So it's not like we're desperate, and I'm for putting a pause on and putting this back more on the shoulders of groups like the chamber and assist them to the extent that that's appropriate for a city.
Council Lamont.
Well, let's clarify a few things. First of all, the tourism that's coming to our cities, when it's done right, brings jobs and business to our businesses. And so we do have a Tourism Advisory Committee, and we have some of the sharpest people I've ever met on that committee that really know this. They've worked at the state level, corporate level, and they've been working on it, I think, since Jackie went and did research around the country. I was part of it. I looked at Birmingham, Michigan. I looked at Galena, Illinois. And you go and visit Galena or visit Birmingham, and there's just some incredible sites that cut right to the chase. Here's the restaurants, the businesses, the shops, the events, the performing arts, the arts, and all the other smaller events that are always kept fresh. And so we're all learning about this. These folks that are on the committee are experts in DMO. So we've had this, and we're at a stalemate, really, right now, because I think folks want to do it and get our name and everything out there. The members of that committee want to be, you know, pushing tourism in a strategic way, not just passing grants for 50,000. So they've worked hard on this, and basically when we went through it, we said, okay, somebody has to run the consultant to put this together if we follow the model from some of these other cities. We said, staff does not, we don't have the staff. Okay, we go to the chamber. Many of these sites are housed the chamber, like you just said, Teresa. Okay, we go to the chamber, and we've got a new director, they've got a million things on their plate. We thought at the committee that the chamber could be the one that would do the invoicing and bring the consultant in, but let our committee and everybody working together to coordinate them. So then, review was at one of the meetings, and Brian means well and is on the committee, but came up, well, maybe Lake O Review could do it. Well, first question from some of the members was, well, is it the Lake O Review site, and we're a little corner, or is it the Visit Lake Oswego site, of which they would put together because they have some expertise? Since then, they met with staff. They said, we're going to try. We can try and put something together, because chamber and staff here at the city, we don't have it right now. So we're in a kind of a stop mode. We have the money. And I think the highest estimates were 150,000 to get a consultant in. The staff is saying, stick with the 50 and see what we can get out. Somebody's got to do it. But if we say, go to the county or go get an RFP or something, who's going to do it? So the 50,000 was less than they thought of, and even with going with 50 goes the next year, what are we doing? I think there's some frustration on the committee's part that we got to get some action. So we're getting no action from any entity, and the chamber, I think, was the one that we were going to go to, because they said, we'll pass the invoice and help coordinate it. That's the frustration I have with it.
Council Wyman.
Yeah, I think I can compare with Council Wyman saying that the review should not be part of the equation, but I think that how it was stated in the briefing, that possibly the review is a clearinghouse, but I really feel like we need not only a clearinghouse, but we also need to have an ambassador, an entity that is going to be able to, you know, ship in place. So let's give it a shot. I think that we should, you know, let's make sure that we get more people at the table, and I think that at the table needs to be, the chamber certainly has to be part of that mix of.
But the question I have is, who's going to then coordinate it from our end? Because the chamber can only go so far. Who's going to call the county? Who's going to do all the extra work for Director Hartman? And we have to commit somebody on our end at least a few hours to help do this. The tax committee.
I'm going to reiterate that I think this would be a collaborative effort. I neglected to mention the review, because they may be the appropriate body to actually gather the data, but what I would suggest, and I don't want to use our task force, but that sort of off-site, each, someone from each of these entities, liaison from the council, director from the chamber, the Lake Oswego review, perhaps Brian Monahan, and I don't know if Jim Austin's still at, yes, and Jim Austin, sit down and have an informal conversation about how this could work. I think that would be the way to move the needle forward and stop some of the frustration, because it sounds like we're at a point where we're ready to do this. And there's principals in place who have the ability, the knowledge, and the skills to do it. Carrie being Ms. Linder, being our fabulous staff person, would probably be available to make a phone call or something to set this up. I don't want to put you on the spot with that, but that would be my suggestion.
Good.
It'll take some skin in the game from us, and we have to either sanction it, Carrie can do it, or a planner can do it, or somebody else can do it. Not full-time right now, but just someone's going to help.
I'm just saying to have an initial get-together with you as liaison. Ooh.
Okay.
City Attorney Powell is losing his desk. I would be happy to sit in on that meeting if need be.
Council Wyman.
Yeah, just to reiterate, I'm not saying to put the kibosh on the project. I think we just need to coordinate. And my big thing is what I'm frankly worried about, what this is written up as, is it's a website, and today it's apps. Websites are one thing, but you have to have an integrated app. You have to have basically a way for the person to come in who this is targeted to, and nothing was mentioned about that. I mean, not that websites are passe, they still have a part to it, but this was not as comprehensive. So all I'm saying, my observation, is that we haven't come up with the structure baking the process quite yet, and I think with developing some partners, and I'd be happy to sit on whatever committee you want to as well. We need to sell the brand of Lake Oswego, and I think we need to take a look at a comprehensive approach of doing it, and I'm all for that. And I'm glad that we have some money set aside, because it's good money to use for that purpose. But I just think we are a little bit, what is it, the cart is ahead of the horse, maybe? I think we need some staff time.
Wait a minute, we've got a motion made in second.
So, do you want to call the motion then?
Yeah.
Oh, you would.
I totally understand, because there's still confusion, you know, with the tax committee members about who and where and how it gets housed and how it gets managed, because we can get a great consultant team in, and then who's running them. I just want to make sure that we commit as a city to sit with our tax folks and chamber and county, and if the review wants to try and take a shot at it as an idea, that's great, but that we move on the ash. And I think they're frustrated. I mean, you were with them for a year. I've been now, it's been six months. They want to see something, and not in an arrogant way. They just want to say, are we working in tourism visitor and using our money? If we didn't have the monies, that's a whole different story. So I think let's convene this soon and put more meat on the bones for this proposal, and then we can go from there.
All right. Motion made in second.
If I may, is the motion to seek a proposal from the review to develop and maintain a web-based clearinghouse?
This recommendation was to, the motion was to approve staff's recommendation, which included that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, all in favor?
Can you make, we had a question, so is there anybody amongst Council Wyman, Kohoff, Mans, can we revise this? I mean, it sounds like we want to, we certainly have made it very clear, we don't want to kibosh this. We were fully supportive. I think, Council Lamont.
I'll make a motion after this one fails.
We haven't even had a vote on it.
I know.
I have a motion to amend.
Counsel, would you read the rules, or would you call the rules so we can find out what are people on?
Mayor Studebaker.
Yes.
Council Wyman?
No.
Wyman?
No.
Kohoff?
No.
Mans?
No.
O'Neil?
No.
And Lamont?
No.
Can I make a motion?
Yeah, go ahead.
Sure.
I would like to make the motion to form the ad hoc committee to develop a little bit more baked plan that's based on some of this previous proposal and bring it back to council. And we will move forward from there.
A second.
Some more detail, like who's going to be on that ad hoc, like the chamber will have.
Right. County will be invited, right?
Do you want me to list all that?
Yeah, please.
Several city entities need to be on it, including probably Parks and Rec, tourism, city staff, central staff. We would need somebody from the chamber. I believe we'd, I'd be happy to have Brian, somebody from the review. I'm not sure if I want anybody from the county. Maybe we need them, but they haven't been a huge.
Wouldn't hurt.
Have somebody from the county on, and then as many counselors as we feel necessarily.
But less than a quorum.
But less than a quorum.
Am I any advance, like maybe some arts festival, or maybe something that, again, like the arts festival or the wine and car show that we have?
Right.
Those can also draw us to.
All right, is there a second to the motion?
A second.
So if this is a motion to create a city ad hoc committee, then we would need to bring a resolution back, and his staff got the sense of what the motion is. So we take this motion as directing that we bring that back to you to actually form a formal committee along the lines of what Council Wyman suggested. Do I have that right then?
Yeah, I mean, I don't think you have to bring it back to us. We just told you.
Let's go do it.
Well, someone has to form the committee. If you're going to form an ad hoc committee of the city, you know, the council actually, by code, would need to adopt a resolution to form it. Unless this is a staff committee, you're saying staff, form a committee that's advisory to staff, and you select who's on there along the lines of what I've said. We can do that, but otherwise.
That was what his motion was, Mr. Parker.
Yes, that's. But this is advisory to the council. I'd recommend we, you know, set it up the right way. I mean, it could be back this next, or the 16th for you. But it just depends, I heard the motion is forming an ad hoc committee. You can change that. I'm not trying to press that issue, but I.
He doesn't want to change it.
I'm all for expediency, so whatever you think would be the most expedient and most effective methodology, I shall leave that to you.
If this is to be an ad hoc committee of the city of Lake Oswego that's advisory to the council, we'd better bring a resolution back to you. And we can do that pretty easily, looking at staff.
Does staff have enough time to be able to get back?
Are you going to bring it back to us on the 16th?
Yes.
Is that satisfactory?
Yes.
All right, thank you, then. Let's go on to the next item then.
Was there a vote on that motion?
You said you were going to bring it back to us. Do we have to take a vote on that, the form?
The vote was to direct us to do that. I guess the consensus.
All right, all right, we'll take, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Are we clear?
Unanimous, sir. That's what you're supposed to say.
All right.
You're supposed to say unanimous, nevermind.
Yes, it is unanimous. That's great. All right, next item, 6.3.
Please use the mouse if you want to point to something on the slide, okay?
Barre Superintendent Jewel Kunkke. Tonight, we're seeking approval to execute a contract with Core and Main for the purchase of an advanced metering infrastructure system, more commonly referred to as AMI or smart meters. Before we ask for approval, we would like to give you an overview of the proposed AMI system. Oh, thank you. Was it off? Yes. Should I restart?
No, you, we heard.
We did introduction, so.
Sounds good.
Whoever we are is not really important, right? But so before we ask for approval, we'd like to give you an overview of the proposed AMI system, how it works, the benefits it offers, and the proposed project timeline that we're looking to execute this in. We'll provide more information about what's included in the overall price of the proposed contract or the project. So first, we want to give a general overview of AMI and how it works, and then we will apply that to the context of the city of Lake Oswego. AMI is a system that utilizes radio frequencies for water meters to communicate reads and other alerts through a secure wireless network. This includes, alerts include notification of high usage, leaks, tampering, and other activity at the water meter. Reads are communicated at every hour or even less than that, depending on what we would like, back to the city's user interface, and then communicated to the city's utility billing software. AMI information is used for monthly billing, and it's also used for monitoring of the city's water distribution system. Use of AMI has been around for several years, and it comes in a couple different forms. The technology has really developed over the past several years, and systems are now much more robust with many more capabilities than when this type of infrastructure was first introduced. So AMI in Lake Oswego, we've been investigating AMI for some time, since before I worked here. The city started a pilot project beginning in 2015, and we were really able to learn about the benefits of this infrastructure and how an AMI system would be implemented here in Lake Oswego. So we've been doing a pilot project for several years over off of Boone's Ferry Road, so. From our experience with the pilot project, we were able to develop a fully informed request for proposals, and after an exhaustive solicitation process, staff are proposing a contract to purchase an AMI system from Neptune Technologies through their vendor, Core and Main. So it's kind of a relationship that they have. So this slide shows how an AMI system would be deployed in Lake Oswego based on the proposed scope of work and project implementation plan. So I'll briefly touch on each piece of the proposed network to give you a better idea of how it works. So first, an AMI system kind of starts with these smart meters, and now these are located at each home. 11,700 water meter replacements are proposed under the scope of work, and this includes pretty much all residential meters that are three-quarter or one-inch in size, and we've brought an example to show you how this works. So Jewel, I don't know if you want to pass that around to everybody? The water meter includes a small antenna, so if you can see, the small antenna is connected to the water meter, and then it pops up through the water meter lid. So the small antenna communicates reads directly from the meter back to collection equipment that's located throughout the city. So here's a picture of our proposed meter. The nice thing is, is that the meter and the antenna are separate, so they can be interchanged if need be, so if one piece fails, we can replace it. So the meter's antennas send interval meter reads and alerts back to collection equipment, which is located at various places around the city. So based on kind of what we've learned from Neptune, the collection equipment will primarily be mounted on water infrastructure. So we're shooting for placing these on water reservoirs like this one pictured. Which one's that, Jewel?
That's Waluga, the new Waluga.
The new Waluga reservoir, and then if there'll be a small antenna just like that. So approximately seven collection units will be needed to cover the city, but a more specific RF study is to be completed under the scope of work of the project. So there'll be seven antennas. They aren't very visually obtrusive, so we feel pretty happy with the collectors and how they look, so. The collection equipment will transmit reads back to the city over a proprietary network. One of the very interesting benefits about the Neptune AMI system is their use of the LoRaWAN network. I know that sounds kind of strange, but basically what that is, is the network will be used to collect meter reads, but it also has the potential to be a platform for other infrastructure sensors as well. And so we're still kind of investigating what that potentially could mean for us, but we're fairly certain that infrastructure such as pressure sensors and flow monitors, water-type infrastructure, will be able to use this open platform. So it has more benefits than just being connected to the meter. There is the possibility that we could use the network for other infrastructure monitoring as well, streetlight sensors and things like that, but we would like to explore this much further before we give you a definitive answer. We do feel that that's in direct alignment with the city's goal, or the council's goal, excuse me, of exploring further smart city initiatives. So the read information is sent back to a user interface that's accessed by staff. This is how the water distribution system will be monitored and can alert staff of any issues that meters are experiencing, so that's provided by Neptune. Then the reads are sent to Tyler Technologies to encode and used for utility billing each month. There is also a portal that can be accessed by water customers to view their water usage in real time, set up water usage alerts, notifications, if there's some sort of backflow or tamper at their meter, they will be able to see that through a customer portal. So it's really beneficial for the city and for water customers. Quickly, I know we discussed this in the staff report, but as a quick overview, I think one of the biggest benefits of the AMI system is that it provides monitoring from multiple standpoints. Utility billing staff, water staff, and water users can all monitor their meter health and their water usage. So there's going to be a lot of eyes on water. This monitoring is a catalyst for the other benefits listed on the slide, so all of these types of things, I kind of categorize them into buckets, and others that aren't listed. So some of the benefits include, and I'll just run through a quick list, more information for staff means more responsive and higher-quality customer service for our residents, consistent and transparent utility billing, and in addition, the removal of manual meter reading services, which are currently contracted out by the city. There's many of There's many efficiencies gained for staff. The use of technology to boost productivity allows us to have a lean, be, excuse me, to become more lean operationally. In-office troubleshooting tools means that there's going to be less truck rolls to respond to issues when data is right at our fingertips. And water conservation goals and efforts are assisted and more informed by the AMI system, and more effective solutions can be developed and implemented based on real data. So the proposed contract has an estimated not to exceed price of just under 2.4 million, and this is over a three-year term. So the price covers the purchase of all needed equipment. And to be clear, the scope of work for this project covers the meter changeouts for three-quarter and one-inch meter, which is a very large percentage of the Lake Oswego Water Distribution System. It also covers the service costs for the installed meters for the three-year duration of the contract. So those are all paid for under this price. The price does not include the cost to install the meters, so that's going to be separate. Excuse me, and it has been budgeted for separately as well. So it's included in our overall project budget, but not for the contract here. There is the three-year initial term, but then there are annual renewal options for seven additional years for the continuing service costs and support. And so we feel that that's good because it gives us pricing stability for 10 years. Some more information about our project timeline. So if this contract is approved by council tonight, city staff begin to plan, are planning to begin changing meters as soon as possible. Changeouts will be completed seasonally using a mixture of temporary staff and internal staff members. And then there will be some changeouts done in the winter and kind of off-season as well. The first year of the contract will also include the setup of the system's backbone. So that includes the collection equipment, like I mentioned, the user interface, and the integration with our utility billing software. So training for, for all staff involved will also happen in that first year of the contract as well. So all that's included in the scope of work. So while the scope of work includes the smaller meters, the city has approximately 700 meters that are larger than one inch. That is outside of the scope of work of this contract, but we are planning to change out those meters as well as resources allow. Here's a map that kind of shows where we're thinking how the project will be broken up. So we'd like to start year one over in the Westlake kind of mountain park area and then shift clockwise around the city. So that's how we plan to do the project. We'd like to do extensive outreach citywide, paired with more targeted outreach for neighborhoods when the changeouts come kind of to their streets, so they can kind of know what's going on. And we think that that's really important to get the word out because we really want people to know about these new meters, how they're used, how they can benefit at a billing level, at a conservation level, at a usage level. So we really want people to know and utilize their, their new smart meters, so. In closing, I will just say that we'd like to thank you guys for, for providing your support and for backing us with funding and the budget for this project, and we are very excited to move ahead with this work. And we believe that we'll very quickly see many benefits. So if you have any questions, comments, or discussion, feel free to ask them, and we will do our best to answer.
Counselor Lamont.
First question is, if I got this right, we have the two outsides companies working with us.
Right.
But this will all be housed with the city of Lake Oswego staff once they get trained.
Right.
So we don't have to go offsite to some to get, it's all within the maintenance center over there.
Right, right.
And then the second thing, I forgot what my second thing was going to be. All right, keep going.
Counselor Wendell.
Curiosity, so how is this powered? So there's actually a, inside the meter itself, to your right there.
Right.
On the side of that, there's actually a sealed battery. It's a 20-year-life battery.
Oh, 20, okay.
Yeah, that's in there. Our warranty is for the first 10 years, and then it's prorated after that. But yes, there is a battery in that, in that meter itself that just boosts the signal to that antenna.
Okay, and this will last as long as a regular meter will be, so.
The, the base, the bronze part of that meter is basically the same as what we use today, which is like a 30-year longer life unit. So then just to register, so the battery is like, say, 20 years. So we're looking at at least a 20-year life.
Okay, and then typically in a big capital project like this, you kind of have a little charter of graph that says, we're going to spend this amount of money, but we're going to save this amount of money, and our payback will be X number of years. And so I, I, I know the $90,000, we won't have a meter reader person coming out, so it's like 95,000 minus the 30,000, so we're 65,000 in savings. But do you project us saving X number of dollars in a staff time?
So it's a good question. We definitely have estimates, and do I think that AMI will fully pay for itself within the 20-year period? Most likely not. If we shot our estimates high, we probably couldn't manipulate the numbers to look that way. There are the tangible savings of we aren't going to be paying the meter readers. We're going to be, the meters themselves are more sensitive, so they pick up lower flows. But paired with that, you have the conservation. So there's definitely two sides to this. I think there's also a lot of benefits that aren't necessarily monetary that align with city goals. So even if this isn't going to pay for itself, I think it comes pretty close with the savings of staff time and the elimination of the contract and potentially picking up higher revenues from more sensitive meters. We haven't done a full cost analysis, no. We have estimates that we're happy to share with you, but that's the best answer that I can give at this point.
And I'm, I'm 100% in favor of the smart city, and, and this is a great avenue. But I just wondered, just from a cost-benefit analysis.
Sure, and anecdotally, I can say that, and Joel can probably speak to this better than me, but we spend pretty much one FTE on our water crew response to utility billing callouts, whether that's move-ins, move-outs, rereads.
That's a daily.
Fixing things, digging up. I mean, there's a laundry list of items that they respond to. So there will be quite substantial freed-up staff time. So if you want to, if you want to translate that into a dollar amount, we could certainly do that. And then I think that that would get us a lot closer to a, a full payback.
Right, no, but you feel like staff time will be reduced, so.
Yeah, like I say, right now, we use one FTE all day, every day. Rereading that, like the meter readers must have missed a reading or move-in, move-outs, you know, other issues, leak detections, thing like that. Our staff does that every day. So this will dramatically reduce that, that time, that we can focus on other water issues.
Okay, great.
Counselor Wendell.
Yes, I was looking through the, the report. So did you say that you did, you had a number in the budget for the installation, but?
Yes.
Was it in, was it in here, or?
So the full cost of the, of the project is estimated at right around $4 million. We gave ourselves a pretty healthy contingency, and we're finding cost savings the more and more we go. So hopefully, it'll come in below that. But that $4 million is spread over three years. And I know I said this in the staff report, but the $4 million for the project was gleaned from savings from the Ello Tiger Water Project, which came in under budget. So we've kind of been waiting in the wings for that money to become available. So there's no rate increases associated with this. And the $4 million will be spread out over the three-year project timeline, so it'll hit the budget three different years.
Okay, and then the other question was, I know there's an annual cost to, I guess, subscribe to the, the, the service. And so is there any, since we own the equipment, does that mean that we, we can only have to use them as a supervisor? Is it, can we subscribe to a different service that?
No, we, I don't think it's open in the fact that if we select Neptune and then we want to go through one of their competitors. I, I don't think that the systems are interchangeable. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the nice thing about Neptune is that they had the lowest proposed continuing costs. They were at about 19 cents per meter per month. Some of their competitors were far higher than that, and so I think they came in as the lowest bid by 400 and some thousand dollars, and it's because of those continuing service costs.
So I mean, the low bid is great, but do we know anybody else in the, the region that uses the Neptune system?
Eee, yeah.
So was it Seattle?
We, when we checked references, excuse me, we checked references, there are a couple cities in the Bay Area. The Core and Main distributor is right down the street, and I could call and see if there's anyone locally that uses them. But they are one of the largest meter manufacturers. I would say they're probably top three with Badger and probably.
Hershey.
Yeah, Hershey.
Well, I'll make a motion if you'd like, move to authorize the acting city manager. Is that correct?
City manager Pro Tem.
Pro Tem. Authorize the city manager Pro Tem to execute a contract with Core and Main LP for the purchase of advanced metering infrastructure system, an estimated, with an estimated contract price of $2,387,248.
Second.
Any further discussion? On favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
And if you have any other questions, feel free to give us a call.
Good stuff.
There's a lot to learn about AMI. We've spent several years learning about it, so.
I'm kind of excited to learn about it, okay?
We are very excited ourselves.
So are you going to install this one in my house tonight?
We can't have this bad.
Next item is item 6.4 regarding temporary signs on Boones Ferry.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. I'm Jessica Numanalu. I'm the planning manager here at the city, and I will try to make this very brief because I think it is pretty straightforward. But the ordinance for consideration by the council this evening would temporarily relax temporary sign regulations for the businesses affected by the Boones Ferry Road project. And Anne Marie did the, I can bring that sign up. So this is a map showing the, basically the areas that are going to be impacted during the Boones Ferry Road project. And right now, we have two categories of temporary signs, we still will after this, if this ordinance is approved. One covers temporary signs that require a permit fee, and one covers temporary signs that don't require a permit or fee. We're not talking about the ones that don't require a permit or fee. Those are things like political signs, for-sale signs, lease signs, that type of things. Those regulations would not change. What would would be the temporary signs that require a permit? These are the kinds of signs that businesses get for events, like maybe they have a sale or, you know, some sort of event that they want to advertise. And right now, our, our temporary code sign regulations limit those signs to banner signs that are displayed no more than 25 days in any one 12-month period, although they could come back for different events and get multiple signs. Those permits cost $130, so businesses usually don't do more than a couple a year. Obviously, that kind of limitation would not help our friends, our businesses in Lake Grove who are affected by this because 25 days is not much for a project that's going to be going on for about two years. So what this ordinance proposes is it basically eliminates the time limitation for the businesses that are directly affected, and there includes a, a figure that shows you, this map shows the businesses that would be subject to these more relaxed temporary sign regulations, and that corresponds with the construction areas in the Boones Ferry Road map. In addition to removing the time limitation, it would allow A-frame signs, and those are those sandwich board signs that you see, subject to limitations, including size and location. And that's all outlined in the ordinance, and I won't go through that in detail. You did receive some testimony from Lake Grove Business Association talking about some of the members wanting a larger sign. And I would just note that the reason we had put a five-square-foot limitation on one side of the sign and a 30-inch height limitation was because we have vision clearance standards that anything taller than 30 inches is not allowed within vision clearance or sight distance triangles. And so it was just an easy way to make sure that if anybody puts any signs out there, because they are mobile and people can move them to different locations, that it's not going to interfere with sight distance or cause any safety issues. However, it is under the council's purview, if you want, to have a larger sign. I do believe the, the larger signs that were cited, he mentioned six square feet, but I actually think it's like six and a half square feet. So I would recommend that if you do want to change those size limitations, that you'd say it would be less than seven square feet and 42 inches tall maximum. So if you wanted, if the council wanted to change that, you could certainly do that. We would still require a permit for these signs to make sure it, it complies with all of our regulations. However, and this is separate from the ordinance, we were, we did receive direction from the city manager to waive fees, so we wouldn't charge the $130 fee. And again, this just applies to these properties shown on the map here on the screen. The Boones Ferry Road project would be completed by the end, it's estimated to be completed by the end of 2021. So what would happen is that these temporary sign regulations would stay in effect until the final completion of the project, which is basically when the city accepts the, the, the final project as complete. So then we would go back to the current temporary sign regulations, so those A-frame signs would no longer be allowed. We also would have a provision in the ordinance that this would expire on December 31st, 2021. So this amendment would help these businesses maintain visibility during construction. It's going to be a very busy, chaotic time out there, and it's consistent with the council goal to support business investment in Lake Oswego, and so we're recommending approval of ordinance 2822.
One question. My understanding, either from letters or from the report, was that the signs we're allowing is still not quite as high on the A-frame as is standard if you were to go purchase one. Is that, do I understand that correctly?
Well, the one, the, the size limitations that we have in there is a standard size. They're more like open house size signs, if you, if you kind of imagine that, that size. There is the larger size, which I think is about six and a half square feet roughly and 42 inches tall. I believe that is another standard size, but we went with the, the smaller one for vision clearance. But you could make it larger, and I think if you did, you know, honestly, I think, you know, people don't want to block vision, vision clearance for their customers, so if there was complaints, I'm sure they would move it. But it, it, there could be issues with, with sight distance or safety because they may not put it in the location that it was approved, especially if it's an employee who may not know exactly where it's supposed to go. So that would be the, the downside, but I, I don't know how big of an issue it would be. It might be okay.
Okay, Counselor Lamont.
So we've talked about this at the Governmental Affairs Committee at the chamber, and one thing was, okay, all the front signage, you know, the monument signs are being taken out to clean up the whole roadway. So they literally would be two, two and a half years without a sign. And if a building doesn't have a sign on the building, then their front monument's gone, they have nothing. So this is basically saying, we're going to give you a temporary reprieve for two, two and a half years with some kind of a makeshift sign to make it as best we can. I was out there the other day, and there's little blue and white signs that I think staff put out there. Now, that's just business open, business open. This would be an addition that says Smith Shoes or Bob's Restaurant or whatever. And so the question is on visibility. I know that we try and control it on smaller events because they're really just on corners. I think these businesses are going to need the bigger sign. And I think Stacy and, and Crystal and company can see if somebody's really blocking a driveway when they're out there or Katie, and say, hey, great, great, but you're blocking the driveway view. I think the bigger, the better, to make sure people know that, yeah, that company is still going. So that's my quick note, but the question I had is, can we do a group permit? Didn't we do that six months ago for something along the right-of-way? Couldn't we just get one permit for all the businesses? We were waiving the fee, but does each one of these businesses have to come to the counter and talk to you guys to get the?
They would, but they would just need to get one, one permit, so they don't.
Per business?
Per business, right.
But could we do a group thing to make it easier on them and let the Lake Grove business group or the chamber come on?
Those middle requirements are that they need to show us what the sign looks like, the dimensions, and the location. I suppose if a bunch of businesses wanted to get together and do that, but each one is going to be a little bit different. They are not all probably going to be uniform. I, I, it's something we could consider, but I don't know that that needs to be part of the ordinance.
No, I wouldn't, no. But it seems like a, a joint application will be this big as opposed to that big. It's fine because as Jessica was mentioning, you have to actually show where the sign will be located on each individual property. But I suppose if they wanted to jointly do that and then have a page for each section of what the application looks like, I'm not sure what the advantage of that is if there's no application fee.
Yeah, if, well, I know, then it's, but I'm trying, trying to save them a trip down to City Hall if it's, they're in enough stress right now. And if it just said, here's one application with the 12 or 10 or 15 businesses attached, and most of them will have the bigger 42-inch sign according to Ken Sandblasts, I'm just trying to make it easy, so.
Well, and we, they could submit it because there is no fee. We'd be happy to take it via email, so they could email it into staff and they could process it that way.
That's good, okay.
Counselor Wendell.
Yeah, I would support a larger sign. I think that, you know, certainly the sign standard was designed to make sure we keep the sightlines for safety, but that's in an environment where there's no construction going. We've got all these traffic cones, we've got all this extra.
Stuff.
Stuff out there that's going to block a normal. -stuff out there that's going to block a normal sign anyway, so I would support, um, going with the, the largest sign possible, I guess, that, yeah.
Okay, so, can I move, make a motion?
Go ahead, Counselor Wynn.
I, uh, move for the tentative approval of ordinance 2822 directing staff to return with the final ordinance and findings for adoption on July 20th, or July 16th, 2019, with the addition of the seven-square-foot, less-than-42-inch-tall sign.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose?
Thank you.
Thank you, it's not in my mind. Okay, next is a consent agenda, and we're going to take item 7.4 off the consent agenda.
Move to accept consent agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Okay, item 7.4 is a ordinance annexing one parcel. Mr. Espy, can you talk to us about that?
You bet. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, good evening. This is an owner-initiated annexation and a result in the addition of approximately .51 acres of residential land of the city, and it is, it was being processed as an expedited review under Metro Code, and, um, the property is on the north side of Washington Court. We received some correspondence from a neighbor who was concerned about tree removal on the property, and, um, they were concerned about, um, removal of trees and grinding of stumps and that sort of thing, but we went out to the site to investigate, and it was determined that there were trees removed, but it was on the adjacent property to the east, um, as, as a part of a partition that was being done to accommodate for the driveway and, uh, in infrastructure. There was about 10 Douglas firs that were removed. However, we did take a look at the site and did find that there were some old tree stumps that were removed quite some time ago. We don't know how long ago it was, but the, the stumps were decayed to a point where, you know, it was very difficult to tell. So we, uh, but I did want to make sure that you understood that we have, um, the Resolution 438 that protects trees prior to annexation, and that encourages property owners interested in petitioning to the city for annexation to preserve and protect the trees. So we have a target list of trees that are listed in the, uh, in the resolution, and it's up to the city council as to whether or not we, um, would enforce the removal of those trees, or, um, quite possibly, the trees were removed at a time before this resolution was even passed. I spoke to the property owner, he indicates that, uh, the person that sold the property to him said that they, there, there were trees on the property, but they were removed approximately 30 years ago, and you can ask him, he's here this evening, if you would like to ask him questions about that. We could go out and have an arborist take a look to ascertain a general ballpark figure of how, how long ago the trees were removed, but I'm not sure exactly, you know, just how, how long ago they, they were removed. We also, um, we, we probably will have to, uh, set this over until the 17th, because we did receive some correspondence from the Fair Housing Council, and they raised concerns, um, regarding Goal 10 and provision of housing. And so the proposed zone change from County R10 to City R7.5 triggered the response from the Fair Housing Council to ask us to address the comprehensive plan Goal 10 Fair Housing in the, in the, um, in the findings. So we'll, we'll come back if it, if it's-
On July 16th?
If you agree on July 17th to-
16th.
16th, I'm sorry, yeah.
You can come to 17th, though.
Yeah.
I know.
I'm dedicated, but that, that, um, okay, but, um, so we, yeah, so we would, I would recommend that, um, the annexation be continued to that date for at least, to, to address at least that issue of fair housing.
Mr. Powell, do we have to have a motion to do that?
Yes, please, yes.
And I'll make a motion, we, uh, bring back ordinance 2823 on July 16, after we have more time to explore the complaints and that sort of thing. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion, Counselor Kohlhoff, did you have something you wanted to say on this?
I just wanted to ask, so as part of the time, during part of this time, you're going to assess how reasonable it is to get an arborist out there to see whether or not the trees had been cut within the 15 years before, um, the request for annexation?
Yes, we actually, um, scheduled the arborist to come out this week. We got on the phone with her, um, right after I spoke with you, and, um, so she should be going out this week to take a look.
Well, and I also want to-
This week or next?
I also want to thank staff that took that seriously, sent you out there, and, uh, you know, when people put in complaints or concerns, and it looks like we don't care, that's, it's bad, and I appreciated it, and I rely on you to, um, have the arborist make the determination, and, and I'm sure that that puts everybody's mind at ease, because we don't want that practice of people doing that to county land and then trying to just zip in for annexation. Thank you, though.
Counselor Lamont, you had something?
Quick question, the, um, resolution that is on the books, as far as you can't go too far back and take trees out, what is that actual time? So if someone comes in for annexation and we discover that they took trees out up to what date, is it like five years or three years, or?
Um, I think it's in effect since the time that the resolution was actually adopted.
But I mean, what, how did they determine that trees were taken out if it was 30 years ago versus three years ago? Is there a timeframe on there? Jessica's smiling, and, no, no timeframe?
Okay.
We conferred with the consulting arborist on this to see if it was possible to, in order to determine, you know, how long ago a tree might have been taken out. And she said, well, it depends on the extent of the decay. I mean, if it was something that was done in the last five years, it's hard to tell if it was a year ago or two years ago or eight years ago. But, um, Paul did indicate, when he went out there, that there was some pretty significant visual decay, and so she thought she, she could look at it and make a guesstimate, you know, within five or 10 years as to when it might have been taken out.
What's, what's the trigger? That if someone tries to play a fast one and take them out, it's like, well, you took them out 10 years ago, that's okay, but if you took them out three years ago, not okay? Isn't our ordinance, or doesn't it spell out an actual date?
It's, the policy says if they were removed after the effective date of the policy, uh, and that was 15 years ago.
Oh, okay, so it's a 15-year bracket.
2004.
Got it.
So that's something council could look at at some point, that time period is getting longer and longer, which is fine, but the council may want to decide, is there some limit to how far back you want to go as time goes on, to have that be a bar to annexation?
And then the second question is, this gentleman's coming in, I, I, you said in the, uh, report that there's eligible for two lots that can be made out of this lot.
Correct.
And that's the reason, come in to, to the city, hook up with us, and then have the ability to do two lots?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Espy. Have we, have we voted on that motion?
Uh, I don't believe you have.
I don't.
There's been a motion made in second to delay this, um, proposed annexation until our July 16 meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Okay, the next item is item 9.1, which is a resolution to consent agenda, item approving appointments to the Transportation Advisory Board, Sustainability Advisory Board, Parks, Recreation and Natural Resources Advisory Board, 50-plus advisory board, Development Review Commission, Planning Commission, Youth Advisory Board.
I move to adopt Resolution 1923.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes. Just want to thank everybody for all the great, hard work we did all day long, and we have so many great candidates, and I think we've got a really outstanding list of new people to add to these boards and commissions, including the students, which were amazing too, so.
Counselor Kohlhoff, you had something?
I would, I would ask, uh, Pro Tem, city manager, is there some protocol for when someone has, as we had a gentleman come in and say, year after year, he had applied for one and had never been accepted, um, do we have some, uh, tradition or some way of responding to what on the surface looks like you're just never going to get accepted if there was a long list such as that?
It's certainly tough to say without knowing the exact nature of the complaint, uh, which is, uh, difficult to, of course, play, to wait to receive that in order to have any sort of, um, response back. I'm, I'll look to Counselor Powell to see if he is aware of anything, but to my knowledge, there's, there's no, there's no policy or anything, um, to, to look to.
Appointments are at the discretion of the city council, well, actually, at the mayor, then approved by the city council, and there isn't a, a criteria. Obviously, there are reasons that would be inappropriate for denial, certain discriminatory reasons, but other than that, it's simply the council's judgment as to who would be the most helpful on a committee, and we don't have criteria beyond that.
So do we have any, and I, and I say this just innocently, too, do we have any evidence whatsoever that anybody has been eliminated from consideration because of criteria that legally would be inappropriate, such as whatever, they're unemployed, they're disabled, experiencing disability, or anything that, uh, veers over into the inappropriate or unacceptable?
Well, certainly, I don't have any information of that happening. Again, I don't know what goes on in interview committees, but I have to press some confidence that councils aren't basing it on the, what they call suspect classifications, that would be illegal discrimination. So again, I, I have to say, on behalf of the city, I'm confident that's not the council's objective, and I've never heard that that actually has happened, but, uh, again-
And, uh, I-
Okay.
Would you say that we've had different sets of panels that have interviewed people over the years, so it's not the same person interviewing and making the selection for each thing?
Of course.
So there's been a huge variation of, okay?
Yes, typically, again, the appointments are, are by the mayor after that interview, and we've had different mayors over the years, of course, different councils on the council committee, different committee chairs who join those interview committees, so, uh, if there were a pattern, it would be among a whole lot of people. So I, again, that, for another reason why I would say I don't think there's a, a, a pattern of, of any sort of inappropriate selection, at least that, that I'm aware of, but I'll, certainly, I've never investigated that sort of thing.
Okay. Next item is information from council.
Call the vote?
We have to vote.
We voted.
We have to vote.
Oh, I thought we had, okay. I'm sorry, uh, we've got a ma, motion made in a second on the consent agenda to approve the appointments on those committees. Is there any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody oppose? All right, now, next item is information from council. Councillors have anything they want to advise us of? Okay? Officers, any information from officers?
Sir.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Kohlhoff?
I'll make this short, but I felt compelled to, um, say a few words. A citizen came in and, I believe, was trying any way to, uh, set people's, uh, minds at ease about what is, uh, trauma about Boones Ferry and the trees. And, and I, I understood that, and I accept that. Uh, I think it goes beyond whether or not we've done a good job to help people visualize what it could look like artistically, um, and it doesn't really help some of the people who have been traumatized by what they're seeing every day. The ninjas come out at night to cut down the trees, and so there'll be trees leaving, um, so that the next day, you're going, gosh, this doesn't look the same. And it doesn't really help those people to say, well, you know, 100 years ago, we didn't have those trees, so you didn't really have a chance to, you don't have a right to have those trees now. And I'm aware that officer, that Director Rooney has specifically addressed for people that, uh, effort has been made to save as, as many trees as possible, to the extent that even some of the, the, the arborists have been concerned that trees were left that should have gone down. I think the only reason I want to say a little bit more here and, um, uh, close up with this is that you're missing a point, which is that mature landscape is tremendously helpful as it relates to climate change, and to say that we're going to have this soft and lovely canopy misses the point that we only have the 10 or 11 years. So, um, we're, we're going to have a soft and lovely canopy, but we're not going to have those mature trees, and that's, that's the part that, that is hurting people. All I would like to report is to invite anyone watching and everyone in the city to join us on the Fourth of July for our pic, uh, our picnic, sorry, our parade, no picnic.
Pancake.
Pancake, okay, wait, pancake breakfast, parade, in between events, whatever they may be, and then that evening for our laser light show in Millennium Park. I think we can see it at Sunleaf Plaza, if I'm not mistaken, um, or of course, at, uh, there is viewing at Lake Grove Swim Park as well. Otherwise, you're on your own. Thanks. Did I forget anything? Thank you.
All right, anything further?
I think you're ready to leave.
Thank you.